We're going to call this meeting in order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call, please? What the heck?
That's not correct. Mayor Kirchner?
Present.
Vice Mayor Harris. Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
In the audience.
And Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
Thank you for that. Uh, City Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two items for closed session. First one is Item A, commercial legal negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 7.6, agency-designated representatives are Diana Langley, City Manager, Natalie Spieringer, Human Resources Director Brad McIntyre, Community Services Director Spencer Morrison, Finance Director Ben Moody, Public Works and Development Services Director Brian Baker, Police Chief Jesse Alexander, Fire Chief Michael Jarvis, L C W, Katie Knacko, Coff, and Associates. Employee organizations are Yuba City Police Officers, Police Sergeants, Yuba City Firefighters, Local 3793, Yuba City Fire Management, First Level Managers, Men Managers, Police Sform Men Managers, and Public Employees, Local Number One. Unrepresented employees are confidential employees, executive services employees. Item number two, or Item Number B for closed session is confirmed real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 6.8 for the property at APN 52411016, located at 825 Jones Street, Yuba City, California, APN 5216136, located at 847 Chestnut Street in Yuba City, California, and APN 51095020 at 1483 Gray Avenue, Yuba City, California. The negotiators Diana Langley, City Manager, and a slash Executive Director. The negotiating parties are to be determined. Under negotiation is whether to sell the properties, and if so, the price and terms of payments. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Do we have any comments from the public?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm doing well, sir. Thank you for asking.
I commend you on the job you've been doing as mayor representing the city.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you for that. Do we have any other comments from the public?
Would you like a few?
Sure. Okay, seen none. We're going to go ahead and adjourn to closed session. We'll call this meeting in order. The regular city council meeting and Housing Successor Agency. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. This meeting will be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner?
Present.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali?
Here.
Thank you for that this evening. The invocation will be given by George Barlow, and we will remain standing for the pledge that will be presented by Councilman Shaw.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we lift up those who are suffering through the devastation in Maui. Father, we thank you for the freedoms that we have in lifting up prayers and petitions to you in this place tonight. We pray for the Yuba City Council and their discernment and wisdom as they serve the citizens of Yuba City. We pray for your protection over the city's police and fire department employees. We are grateful for their call to duty for others. We pray for all city workers and their service to the residents of Yuba City. We pray for the welfare of all of our citizens, and that our great diversity will not separate us, but bring us together. I thank you, Father, for your grace, for your mercy you give us all. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Salute flag. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, City Attorney. We have a special treat tonight. Meet Babs and Ginger, two vibrant souls who have donned their quirky attire of chickens to bring joy and happiness to every corner they visit. With their fun costumes and fun dances, they're on a mission to spread positivity and love, leaving a trail of smiles and warm hearts wherever they cluck their way. Follow them on Facebook at Wings of Positivity, where you can see daily posts of inspiration and places they've visited. Send them a private message to request a visit to someone needing a pick-me-up.
Would you like a picture of the council?
Oh, yes.
I'd like a picture of her.
He's scared of chickens.
All right, one, two, three, smile. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, it just never, it never ends around here, does it? All right, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hard act to follow, but there was no reportable action in closed session.
All right, thank you for that. Number one, ceremonial presentations. I'd like to ask, invite Jason Matsui, Water Treatment Plant Operator Four, to come forward, please, and City Council to join me. Jason Matsui retired from the city of Yuba City after 32 years of service on July 22, 2023. Jason's dedication to continuous improvement and education in water treatment has provided our residential and commercial customers with safe, reliable, quality drinking water, offering working nights and weekends. His dedicated interest and devotion to his duties and protecting the health and safety of our community has earned Jason the respect and admiration of all residents and coworkers alike. The city of Yuba City and the Public Works Department wishes Jason all the best as he enters the next phase of his life with his wife Erin. Is your wife Erin? Okay.
Wait, man.
Son Justin and daughter Ally, where he will enjoy his many hobbies, including golf. I saw the shirt. Nice man. There you go. Snowboarding, duck hunting, exercise, and travel. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend Jason's outstanding and loyal service and sincerely urge all residents of the city of Yuba City to join me in recognizing Mr. Jason Matsui for all of his contributions to the city of Yuba City community for the last 32 years. Let's give him a hand. Jason, would you have a few words to say?
It was a pleasure serving the city all those years, and, gosh, I can't believe I actually, it's over, you know? It's been like a blink of an eye. I'm proud of what our team has accomplished, and I thank you all for the recognition. Thank you.
Okay, number two, Holy Cross Funeral Home 25-Year Proclamation. I'd like to invite David Holy Cross, owner of Holy Cross Funeral Home, to come forward. This is, now, this is, this is an honor for me. It really is, David. I've known you not as long as the rest of these gentlemen have, but the short time I've, I've known you, and those of you in the audience, this man is a class act. He really is. He's got a difficult job, but he's a pro. And I've seen him at work firsthand, and really, he deals with individuals that are going through a very difficult time. And he does it, he does it extremely well. So, this, this, this is, this is an honor for me just to be here. Welcome, David Holy Cross, owner of Holy Cross Funeral Home, whereas the city of Yuba City would like to celebrate and recognize David Holy Cross, the owner of Holy Cross Funeral Home, for 25 years in business. Holy Cross Funeral Home has a team that includes David's son, Trevor. Is he here? Is he? Oh, hi, Trevor. Chico State. Chico State, okay. And his fiancee, Tana Dodge. Hi, hi there. Along with other team members, Wes Porter and Zach Dolins. And David has worked part-time, has, has worked a part-time job in a funeral home and became high school, high school, and later, after his freshman year in college, decided to become a mortician and attended mortuary college. Holy Cross Funeral Home directs, works directly with the Sutter County Sheriff, Coroner, local churches, and community members to assist with someone's passing 24 hours a day, all year round. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby congratulate David Holy Cross, the owner of Holy Cross Funeral Home, on their 25-year anniversary. Let's give him a hand. I know you've got a word to say.
Well, you know, that was very nice, Wade, and all you guys, City Council. Thank you for this honor. Thanks, thanks for the invite. I'm grateful for our friendships, and I just, I love being a part of the city. We, we, we put together win-wins. I like seeing you guys out. We're always, you know, like you guys. It's been an honor to serve the community. I can't believe it's been 25 years. Yeah, and with my son there, I hope we're here another, in 25 years to get a 50-year proclamation. I'm grateful for my fiancee, Tana, and yeah, I have a great team, and there's Michaela from the newspaper. She, I think you stole her article a couple of weeks ago. She, she gave me a nice blurb in the newspaper, but yeah, it's such an honor to be entrusted and serve this community. I'm at the same location on Bridge Street, 25 years, so I'm very grateful. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to invite David, excuse me, I'd like to invite Brock Bowen, American Legion Vice Commander, to come forward, please. How are you, sir? The city of Yuba City proclaiming the city as a Purple Heart City, whereas many citizens, past and present, of our community have received a Purple Heart Medal. The mission of the, of Yuba City American Legion is to foster an environment of goodwill among combat wounded veterans, promote patriotism, to make sure that we never forget the sacrifices of our military service men and women. The city requested Yuba City American Legion Vice Commander Brock Bowen to pursue Yuba City becoming, becoming a Purple Heart City, and the city of Yuba City is already in the process of having Highway 20 and Highway 99 becoming part of the National Purple Heart Trail within the city limits of Yuba City. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, does hereby proclaim the city of Yuba City as a Purple Heart City, and hereby encourages the residents and businesses of Yuba City to show their appreciation for the sacrifices Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms, to acknowledge their courage, and to show them the honor and support they have earned. Let's give him a hand. Do you have a few words you'd like to say?
Sure.
Okay.
It's kind of surprising that when I got asked to make the city a Purple Heart City, I asked the city to let me make a Purple Heart Trail through the town, and I'd never done a city before, so I had to do a lot of research. Pretty, pretty easy. With this proclamation, you are now officially a Purple Heart City. It's my job from this point to get it registered to national, so you're on the list. There's quite a few people on the list, quite a few cities in California, but I don't think there's that many north. So, it's a pretty good honor. With that said, I'm going to give you an update on the Purple Heart Trail, because we've already gone through that. And the last time I did the Purple Heart Trail, it took me five years, so I'm way, way ahead of the schedule. Everything's been submitted to Gallagher. He hasn't quite read what I've given him yet, but he's, I'm going to get with him next week. This proclamation, a copy of this, I've already put in the proclamation for the state, so I have to get a copy of this to him. Once that's done, we'll come before legislation on December, and they got about a six-week period to put it into law or proclamation, or whatever they do. Once that's done, it goes to about five different committees, and we've got about six months there, and then it's done. So, we're moving along. We're moving much faster than we did before. The one thing that's different with Yuba City is I've requested nine locations for signs, and Gallagher says it's never been done, so he's trying to get with Caltrans to see if we're going to have a problem with Caltrans. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, Yuba Sutter Transit Executive Director, Matthew Melick. I'd like to invite Matthew, I pronounced that correctly?
Mauk.
Mauk?
Yeah, thank you.
Matthew Mauk, our new Yuba Sutter Transit Executive Director, to say a few words. Or is he?
Good evening, Mayor Kirchner, council members. Again, for the record, my name is Matthew Mauk, Yuba Sutter Transit Authority. Thank you very much for the opportunity to introduce myself in person, face-to-face, as I've taken over the agency almost exactly a month ago, replacing Keith Martin, I'm sure you're well aware, retired recently after 36 years of service with the agency. So, I'm actually returning to the agency. I worked for Keith from 2013 to 2017, so I'm very pleased and excited to be back with the agency in this capacity, and very grateful for the opportunity that the board has given me. A lot to work on over the next few years. We have recently adopted our Next Generation Transit Plan, which will guide our, our rightsizing and pivoting of the agency and public transit services in Yuba City, as well as the other three jurisdictions, over the next several years. Our board has also adopted an ambitious plan to convert our entire fleet to zero emission, ahead of the state's requirements to do so, and that's somewhat predicated on our ability to build and move into a new, a brand-new transit facility in Linda on Avondale Avenue in the next few years as well. So, lots coming up. I look forward to working with you and the city staff as we move forward, with our staff as well. I wanted to mention, here to support me tonight, our Finance Manager, Simone Reed, who I go back with to 2013, I believe, when we first worked together. So, again, thank you. I'm available to you at any time, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Through the mayor. Matt, I just wanted to say a couple of words before you sat down, because we sat on the Transit Board, you interviewed, fabulous. You were from our Transit Authority years ago, but what you didn't tell the people is we didn't go outside of the area to bring our Transit Executive here. He lives in Yuba City. So, thank you for being a part of our community, and thank you for what you're going to do with.
It's my pleasure. Proud to do so. Thank you.
Okay, public communication. Appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on actions, action item appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other item within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We do have a written request from Mr. David Avery. Is there a David Avery here? Okay. Do we have any additional comments from the public? Just step up to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Bruceanne Harrell. I live at 2633 Drum &amp; Drive, Yuba City, Shanghai Bin area. So, I have a couple of issues going on with our parks. I am a daycare provider of 14 children, and I visit the park three times a week. I have some pictures and stuff that I'd like to give to you guys. I have some problems with the trash cans. We have parts and pieces that are missing off of the play structures themselves, which I did YC 311, which I love that app. I YC 311 about the chain, the climbing chain. One of my kids' hands was cut on the chain because the rubber is peeling off of it. That was taken down, and you'll see in the photo, there is a piece of wood put up there now with chains around it. Mind you, I have seen numerous bigger kids kicking that piece of wood. So, every day when we visit the park, I have to make sure that that's safe for my kids to go up the other direction to go back down the slides. The side, the slides, there's two of our slides that are literally cracking, where the kids catch their legs or whatever and cut the bottoms of their legs. I just, I, I visit this park a lot. Not only, let's see, I believe my daughter was about two when the park opened. She's 28 now, and I remember us being on the front page of the paper when Shanghai Bin was opened. I think it's time for a new park. I mean, I really do. It's not safe. The concrete, which, again, YC 311, I love it because I just can send pictures, do my thing, and it's taken care of. The maintenance of the park is always very well taken care of. The guys are very friendly, especially when we're there with my daycare kids. Like, they even want to help. They're like picking up trash with them and stuff. So, the maintenance of the park is fabulous. The concrete's uneven. They've had to come shave it before. It's a hot mess. It's unsafe, and I don't want my children or my grandchildren playing at this unsafe park. I do realize that they are talking about refurbishment of this park. I'm not okay with that. It's time for us to have a new park, a safe park that we can go to. The water facility drains into a big muddy pile, big puddles. It's just, it's a hot mess. And I do have some photos that I can leave with you or whatever, but that's it.
Okay, thank you.
We need a new park, please.
Would it be possible for you to drop those photos off with our city manager? And before you leave the podium, I, I do appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I, I spoke with Supervisor Conant.
Yes.
And I believe you spoke, yeah, I spoke with him.
Yes, here's my, yes.
And, and, and this was, you know, not even two hours ago, and so I, I appreciate you bringing this to the council's attention and the city's attention, so thank you.
Yes, anytime I've ever really had an issue with it or whatever, I do YC 311. Robert's usually the one to call me, or somebody else from the city will contact me or whatever, because I'm very adamant about it, and I will be very adamant about this park. I will not let this go. So, we need safe, secure, some, you know, a nice area for the kids to play. Happy Park's been redone twice. I get that there's municipal parks where, I haven't quite done all the research on that, but something about funds coming in for people to use those parks, maybe, and I know ours isn't that way. I know that we just have to have, if like you have a party of 25 or more at the park, you need like a permit or something, which a lot of the times, I'm thinking that probably doesn't happen, because I was picking up pop balloons, parts of pieces, you know? My kids are trying to put that stuff in their mouth or whatever. It's, it's, it's bad. And like I said, but the maintenance, everybody keeps up on it. It's just that we need, we need something new.
Thank you.
So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate, thank you very much.
Can I add to that?
Please.
Hi, my name is Troy Vino. I live at 340 Twin Rivers Drive. I'm also a part of that neighborhood. My understanding is that this park was created in 1998. There was three parks built about that same time. One of them was Happy Park, and I can't remember the other park that was. Out of these three parks, two of them have been updated even more than once, and what do you call it? This park has not been touched. And the question I've been having, this has been going on for three years, being looked into, being trying to be replaced or remodeled. The question is, is the amount of foot traffic that visits this park outdoes what's present time? And even if you just try to remodel it, it's still overwhelmed. So, as far as I know, there was a budget for this, and this began three years ago, and they're about halfway with the budget. I don't see a problem unless there's some kind of elsewhere being put, since we have 16 parks in Yuba City, two of them are municipals. And I just found out that too, that this park has a sign-up sheet, so you can reserve it. Well, if that's the case, then that fits with the other two municipals. And that's where I'm, I'm getting a little confused about what level of support this southern park is getting. We have two water parks. This is one, and then the north one up north. So, you can imagine, that's why it gets a lot of footprint, unlike, what, Holly, Polly Park, Holly Tree Park, which was brought in from the county, and when it did, it got new equipment right then. But then, again, the existing parks are being ignored. So, I appreciate you taking my time so I can address this, and there's a little concern, especially, I'm not sure when fully it's going to be replaced, and I think it's becoming, getting to a point of a safety hazard. So, especially with the defacing, degrading, and just deteriorating, and that has to do with. And that has to do with, since it's, what, over 20 years old? So I would appreciate you taking your time and addressing this properly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Do we have any other public comment? Any further public comment? Okay. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted on one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual, individual action. Item 12 is being pulled from the consent calendar. Do we have any comments from the public on items 6 through 11 and 13 through 14? We do have a speaker card from Heather Esman.
Thank you, good evening, gentlemen. So my name again, Heather Esman. I am, I live on the corner of Lincoln and Sanborn, and I wanted to speak to item number 14. I looked at the packet, the agenda packet, and it wasn't clear in the agenda packet if there, based on the requirements for the streets, particularly Jefferson, what kind of bicycle lane there's going to be there. It wasn't mentioned at all. It just says Parkway, et cetera. And that, I'm not sure how that's going to tie into the, to the park. I was looking at the picture, so it's really difficult to see. I don't know if that's part of that plan for that Parkway or not. I've been, I've even looked, I don't know if this came up on the planning commission, because I've been watching the meetings, but it's not clear where you would end up riding a bike. Now, please remember, that, that road, particularly Jefferson, but also Ruby, but that road is basically the road that kids are going to be using when they're riding their bikes to go to the high school. So I think that just saying that they share the road is not sufficient. They need to have a lane. The city needs to continue to think of people besides just the bicycles, the cars. There are bicyclists out there, and particularly for those kids that are on bikes going to school. I think it's necessary to make sure that we make it a requirement that these roadways have those bicycle paths on there. And maybe if they're trying to redirect that to the, to the park, I don't know if that's the, the idea there, but looking at those pictures and looking at the description, I read the description, it did not say anything in specific for a requirement for a bicycle path. So please, anytime you get something like this, focus in on new projects, particularly ones that are close to schools, that they have bicycle lanes as a requirement, not just as a suggestion or the length or whatever, so that they can figure out what they want to do. The city needs to make that determination, not the developer. On those internal streets, whether they want to make trees or not, and, and put City Tree Park, you know, the City Tree Strips or not, and you guys want to decide that, that's, that's, that's up to however you want to do that. But those main thoroughfares, particularly Jefferson, because that's going to be a main thoroughfare, once that's connected, that needs to have a safe park, a safe bicycle lane. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments from the public on items, consent counter items, 6 through 11 and 13 through 14? Any further public comments? Yeah, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before a motion is made, could we have a modification to the resolution, item number 14, that it would be attached here to as Exhibit A, as to its material terms for the approval of the subdivision agreement? We have one thing we need to potentially tweak on the fee portion. Thank you.
Okay. So any action on council, from council on consent, consent, consent counter items? Anyone want to tackle this one?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Moved to approve consent calendar items 6 through 14, with the exception of item 12. And I need to address, Mr. Chaffin, what you said.
It, it would include what I said, as well as a recommendation. Thank you.
So I've got a motion from Councilmember Shaw.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Piscuali. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, moving to business items. Number 15. Street racing ordinance presented by Bill Williams, police sergeant.
Good evening, Mayor Kirchner, Vice Mayor, and fellow council members. I am Bill Williams with the Uba City Police Department. I'm a police sergeant. I'm currently assigned to the Traffic Education Enforcement Unit. I'm here before you tonight to present a possible amendment to one of our current city ordinance, our city ordinances in reference to street racing. Since 2021, there have been no less than 17 incidents involving street racing and sideshow events in the city of Uba City. These events are typically organized by local individuals, and the same group of members have developed different methods to master their locations. One of the techniques that they're currently utilizing is to utilize social media to put forward a particular location within the city that law enforcement, oh, thank you, that law enforcement will respond to because of a group of individuals. Once our resources have been depleted by responding to that particular location, then the actual sideshow or street race event will occur in another part of the city. These individuals also seek out-of-area participants, and we have contacted individuals as far away as the Bay Area, Stockton, and Sacramento. Many of the individuals that show up in our community are not law enforcement-friendly. Some of the associated criminal activity as a result of these street racing and sideshow events have encompassed intersection takeovers, vehicle pursuits, reckless driving, crashes, to include hit-and-run crashes, city property damage, fights, and we have even received shots fired calls. I believe that these events are a threat to our community, and this is why. Many of these events draws many spectators and participants. I have personally seen hundreds of individuals and at least hundreds of vehicles coming to our community. Many of the individuals that show up for these street racing and sideshow events are juveniles. I have even witnessed parents bringing toddlers and middle-school-aged children to these events. This has placed these spectators in very close proximity to subjects engaged in reckless driving. Citizens have been injured as a result of collisions. City property has, city property has been damaged, and they have even used illegal fireworks at some of these shows, presenting a fire danger hazard as well. There is also a threat to law enforcement that tries to deal with these events. Case in point, on April 23rd, 2023, at about 1:00 a.m., one of our young police officers was dispatched to the area of Clark Avenue and B Street to assist another officer who had stumbled up onto a sideshow event. As the officer approached the intersection of Clark and B, his vehicle was surrounded by spectators from the previous sideshow event. During that timeframe, these individuals refused to disperse, and they proceeded to significantly damage the patrol car. They also shined more than one laser in the police officer's eyes. Ultimately, that police officer was unable to assist those other officers who needed emergency assistance. I believe the benefits of amending the current ordinance that the, that we currently possess will allow law enforcement to address not only the street racing incidents, but also sideshow events, their participants, and the spectators. This amendment will declare vehicles used in sideshow events as a nuisance and subject to forfeiture and impoundment. This will complete existing, or complement existing laws, such as Vehicle Code Section 23109, that deals with reckless driving. This is all in an effort to discourage future lawless events, and ultimately to increase public safety and the quality of life of our citizens. The Uba City Police Department's recommendation is to amend the current ordinance. It is Ordinance Section 4-807, Article 4, Chapter 8 of Title IV, Regarding Motor Vehicle Racing, and have it include sideshows, sideshow participants, and sideshow spectators. The city council's alternative is to leave the existing municipal code as is. I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Sergeant. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any public comments on this item? Yes.
I'm Tony Curlin, 636 Anna Drive. Will the Sheriff's Department be involved in the area that you are not patrolling to make sure that we have some protection against these sideshows and street racing?
Sir, I don't have an answer to that question at this point. That would be something that I could follow up on, though.
Appreciate that, because, you know, we, we have no, no patrols. City Attorney.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Tony, to answer your question, this ordinance only covers the city, and currently, the county's ordinance does not sync up with this ordinance. The city's taking the lead and trying to get an ordinance with more teeth. But my understanding is, police department is trying to work with the county in order to stop these particular events from occurring.
Because, yeah, we are part of the city, and we just don't seem to be getting the benefits of some of this stuff, so, thank you. Thank you.
Heather Esman, I'm going to try and interpret what he was trying to say. It's Beat Six. Beat Six, people. So it's great that they're going to be doing something, but what are you going to do about Beat Six? Because Lincoln Avenue, Lincoln Road's where I live, and I, I've gone walking with my dog and see in the next morning all the tire tracks. So, and you know it too, that they go out there, that's a really wide road there, so it's really tempting for them. And since the sheriff's area patrols that, you know, how are you going to be able to get, get a hold of this if you're not in charge of Beat Six? Because they'll just go over to Beat Six then, and they don't have enough sheriff's officers to do that. And I think that's what he was trying to get at, not the Keyhole area, because the Keyhole area is also another element where that's county. So if county doesn't have this ordinance, they could technically go over to that area. But for us, we're city, and we would like to have that same, the same services as everybody else, if that's possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Troy Winham. I live at 340 Twin Rivers Drive, and I can understand his sentiment, because we have a lot around Shanghai Bin Park. And I'm assuming there is a lot, especially with, most of them are modified vehicles, where they have loud exhausts. And 2:00, 3:00 in the morning is when I start hearing those exhausts running through our neighborhood, and they are very loud. And I'm not sure if that's being enforced to deal with that, but there is a lot of vehicles that have that, and you hear that every night in our area. And the second thing is too, is even if we saw these cars and tried to see who's in these cars, these vehicles normally have tinted windows. And my understanding, and I thought as passenger and driver's vehicles cannot have tinted windows, but there is a large amount in Uba City that does have this. My understanding, and I thought that was illegal, so I just wanted to mention that, that not only is it happening in one area, but it's also in the southern part of Uba City. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any further public comments on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to council for discussion and/or action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sergeant, for the presentation. I'm curious about the impound and forfeiture, so we can confiscate their vehicles, and they would end up at some point. Can you help me better understand what that looks like?
Current existing law under 23109 of the California Vehicle Code, if an individual is arrested for reckless driving, that allows us to impound their vehicle for not less than 30 days, or not more than 30 days. So there is existing law that already is in place in regards to impounding. The new portion of this city ordinance would be the section in regards to forfeiture. If we continuously have an issue with the same subject and the same vehicle, and we're giving these individuals citations after citations, there has, the police department has received information that these individuals, they'd rather just pay the fine and go along their merry way. If we have a little more teeth in the ordinance that allows us to forfeit that vehicle, that's a really big incentive for them not to come back to our community and do this again.
So, thank you for that. So it sounds to me like that could be a significant deterrent. Have others have that forfeiture option within their toolbox? And has that been tested, and is that working? Because it seems to me like that's a great, a great thing to, to implement here.
I, I know the basis for this particular amendment was pulled from, I can't remember the particular agency from Southern California, they're kind of spearheading that. They have had success with their implementation of their version of the city ordinance. In regards to being able to speak to exact numbers, I'd be more than willing to research that and come back to the city council when convenient, but I don't have exact numbers at this point in time.
Yeah, no, I, I don't know that I need that, but thanks. It just seems to me that if, if, if someone's going to take my vehicle, I'm going to give it a second thought before I drive up here and subject myself to that. So thank you, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, thank you for that presentation, Sergeant. Now, it's, forgive me, because it's been a while, but is it, am I remembering correctly that there's already, there's already provisions for forfeiture in the Vehicle Code, but in order for you guys to do it, we need, you need the council to buy off on that? Or is that something completely else that, that I'm remembering?
That's not something that I can.
Not, okay. If I remember something about that to where it maybe, maybe it was driving on suspended or something, to where you, your, the Vehicle Code is, there's provisions there, but in order for you to enforce it, you need to get an ordinance from the council. Anyway, Heather, good, good point on Beat Six. However, separate issue, same thing with tinted windows and exhaust, very valid, but separate issue that we, they can all go out there and address when, when they can. For the ordinance, you mentioned that if you have repeated issues with these offenders going out and doing what they do, can we make it to where one and done? Do we have to play the game of, don't do that, or we're going to say, don't do it again, and then forfeit?
We absolutely could, but that, that would be incumbent upon the police officer that observes that violation to be able to justify.
So we can give them the option of, of, I would support that. Of course, I'm not going to tell you how to do your job, but as long as we can do that, because some people, obviously, you know, you know that, they need it the first time. And, and one thing I'm curious about, when we do forfeit, what would you do with the vehicle?
Ultimately, it gets sold, and those proceeds, there's a process for those proceeds to be disseminated, to reimburse the charges that occurred during that incident.
I'm sorry, reimburse what?
For those different charges that were incurred during that incident.
Okay, thank you. Definitely, of course, support that and anything else we can do. Thank you.
Through the mayor. Thanks for bringing it forward tonight. We know we've got a problem with this, and we need to give you guys every tool in that toolbox that we can. My question gets to the bystanders, because it's, to me, when I look at it, it's, it's two-pronged. You've got, whatever you want to call these people, that, you know, think that they are on Fast and Furious and doing the sideshows, but you take away their audience as well, and you take away their 15 minutes of fame. So does this give you any additional teeth to address them as well for encouraging on illegal activity or endangering, you mentioned toddlers and kids endangering children. Is there anything more we need to do on those lines to give you guys further tools in your toolbox?
Well, this amendment would address that, that particular situation that you're speaking to in regards to those spectators. There are definitions that were, that are within the proposed amendment that articulates what specifically a spectator is, and there are some certain requirements that they have to meet to be deemed a spectator. Ultimately, what the goal is, like you said, is to take away the spectators, which takes away the, the desire to show off or to have these certain events. The Vehicle Code and the current.
The vehicle code and the current existing municipal code are very narrow in their scope in regards to what the articulate as motor vehicle racing, motor vehicle speed contests, and reckless driving. This amendment to the existing ordinance would provide us that additional teeth to address those spectators, to address those participants, and ultimately, to discourage that type of activity within our community. So, absolutely, this would be another tool in our toolbox to be able to utilize, to be able to, you know, help the concerned citizens out there that are hearing the squealing tires at two o'clock in the morning, that drive around Yuba City and see the tire marks in the intersections. And ultimately, traffic is a huge quality of life issue for everybody in the community, and this amendment would help us address that specific part of street racing that impacts that quality of life.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for all you guys do, because no neighborhood is immune from this. I got woken up last summer, a block from my house on Gray Avenue there, there was a whole sideshow going, and what woke me up was the smell of smoke, and then all the lights everywhere, because you guys were there and nothing flat chasing these guys down. So, thank you for staying after them. I just want to bring back a point of clarification. I think you can answer this, if not, Mr. Chaffin, but when we pass this, this municipal ordinance applies to the laws within the corporate city limits, whether or not they're in beat one, two, three, four, five, or six, correct? It's within the corporate city limits. Okay?
Yes, sir.
So, and I just want to bring up another point. I know that there's, beat six, like you said, is a whole nother animal, and that'd be a whole nother discussion, but I've watched you guys in action, and if you get word of something happening down on Walton or down in the beat six area, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm sure that you guys work with the county already and would be on that and enforce these new ordinances and trying to be ahead of it, or if they got a call, hopefully, our counterparts at the county would call us in. Am I correct?
Oh, absolutely. That happens a lot on patrol, especially in the evening hours. Law enforcement resources are stretched thin nowadays, and both the Sutter County and the Yuba City Police Department, we work in concert with each other, and we're constantly backing each other. And if there is an incident where they're incapable of handling that situation in their jurisdiction, we respond and assist them all the time.
Thank you, because I know it's the council and the cities' wish, if I can share this with us, as well as PD is to service all of our residents. We just have our arms tied right now in some certain situations, but thank you.
Through the mayor.
I've got a question about Sergeant. Is, are these misdemeanor violations or felony violations? Because I know you can ratchet up with your vehicle, get into a felony situation. How is this going to be administered? Is it-
So, within this ordinance, a violation of this specific ordinance would be an administrative violation, and it would be subject to, I believe, it's a hundred dollar fine for each citation that's issued. Technically, a violation, most of the violations within the Yuba City Municipal Code are considered misdemeanors. The felony section, that's reserved for the vehicle code and the penal code sections. This would not qualify as a felony section.
Is there any way to ratchet this up?
Well, that's where the vehicle forfeiture part comes into play. Being able to take those instruments, those that have been deemed a nuisance to the community, and being able to forfeit those and not provide those individuals access to that equipment, that ultimately is, I think, a very much harder message sent to some of these individuals than whether it's a misdemeanor or felony. A lot of these individuals do not care about that.
Okay. Your, or April twenty-third illustration up there is in my backyard. I get it. So, yeah, I'm all for this. Hammer these people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Just to springboard off of Sergeant, or Sergeant Williams's comments, in addition on the administrative violations, it's usually a hundred dollars for the first violation, second, two hundred dollars for second, five hundred for third, and a rolling twelve-month period. There are also provisions in here for recovery of attorney's fees, cost administration. It would be a nuisance. There's also administrative or criminal citation and civil actions that the city can also take as part of these procedures that are baked in. So by doing this, this bootstraps into our nuisance ordinance and gives us some additional enforcement mechanisms. And frankly, given where we are in the current state of the law, this is about as robust as you can get in providing tools to your law enforcement.
Does this go on your DMV record, something of this sort?
Not for violations of city code, but it would be per violations of the vehicle code.
Thank you for that clarification, City Attorney, and thank you for the presentation, Sergeant, and thank you for keeping us safe, by the way. This is, this is a problem that I don't think any part of the city is exempt from. Those of us that go to bed early, and, and we don't necessarily hear it, we certainly see it on, on, on the roads after this, this behavior takes place, and I appreciate, applaud the, the city for tackling this in such manner that they have. So with, having said that, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Here I move that we introduce an ordinance for the city of council, the city of Yuba City, further regulating unpermitted motor vehicle racing exhibits of speed and sideshows by authorizing forfeiture and, when applicable, equitable sharing by amending Section four-eight dat point four-zero-seven, Article four, Chapter eight of Title four, the Yuba City Municipal Code, by title only, and waive the first reading.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Pasquale.
Second.
And a second from Vice Mayor Harris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving to item number sixteen, Berry Elementary School Waterline Extension Project Award Construction Contract, presented by Mr. Ben Moody.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So the item before you is in regards to the Berry School Waterline Extension Project. So, this is a long time coming, and so I don't know if any, on the staff report, if anybody caught the date, but it's 2015. I remember meeting with the state and the school district on how to handle noncompliance issued to Berry School. And so, so where we're at with it, I'll power through real quick, is, is really, we went out to bid, and we're looking to award the contract, subject to the state updating their grant award. So really, the city's taking this project on. It's hard to see, but it's, it's connecting a fourteen-inch waterline near the corner of Railroad and Boge, running south down to, down to Berry Road, and then hanging out, and then going west to Berry School. And then there's also a connection, a twelve-inch water main on Stewart, to provide a loop system for the city so there's quality water headed that, for that length of stretch. So it's about twelve thousand millennial feet. So it's a, it's a, it's a long stretch. So, where is the city at with this project? So the project was put out to bid, and there was six bidders received, and, and with it, we ran into a little bid, bid irregularity that we're, I'll walk you through. And so Newland Entities, a local company, was the low bid, apparent low bid of three-point-five million, and with the West Valley Construction, around three-point-eight. And so however, when we dived into those bids, there was, with Newland Entities being the low bid, it was determined that he did not solicit for disadvantaged business enterprises in accordance with the requirements. And so with that, honestly, it was, it was, it was a lot, a lot of back and forth and a lot of confirmation with the state, because one of the, one of the particulars with it is that Newland Entities is a hundred percent DBE qualified vendor. And so even though he didn't advertise correctly for his subcontractors, he was a hundred percent a DBE, so he would have actually got a higher participation rate potentially, going with the number one versus a different bidder. But with it not following the bid procedures that were specifically spelled out in the bid package, and then also it's being vetted with the state, in coordination with the state, it didn't meet the requirements of the bid. And so with that, with coordination with the state, with coordination with the attorney, it was determined that it was non-responsive, and so we're recommending it tonight that we move to the second bidder, with no findings that there was any irregularities with the second bid. And so where does that put the construction cost? Construction contract, three-point-eight million, fifteen percent contingency, and around a seven percent construction management. With this, to, to ensure we have the inspection requirements to meet the state levels and our current staff levels with our construction inspection, and then also provide some labor compliance, we're coming in right around four-point-six million. And so with this project, we moved forward with it back in 2015 with the state, that this was going to be a fully reimbursed project, so design, environmental engineering. And so that's where, as this cost has continued to climb with time, it's, it's been the understanding that the city's not going to move forward until there's an actual commitment from the state in writing that for the full amounts covered. And so what, with the bid package, there's, there's anticipated a hundred-and-twenty-day waiting period. So we're, with the council's award pending, pending financial approval from the state, we're going to package this up, send it to the state, and then within a hundred-and-twenty days, they're supposed to give us those updated documents, financials with the commitment, and then we'll issue the notice of to proceed with the contractor. And so, you know, here's a draft schedule that, I, I think this is a little ideal with dealing with the state and then dealing with the winner. But, you know, the earliest we're really going to start with that, four, four-month, you know, all of a sudden, eight months, you wait, you wait four months with the state, that's, that's December, most likely, they're not going to even get back to us until February, you know, but hopefully, and then you're trying to start during the winter time. So I'm, if everything goes as planned, most likely, this is going to be a spring start, work through the summer and wrap it up.
So with that, tonight, I, I have recommendations A through E. Reject Newland Entities Incorporated Bid Is Non-Responsive. Award The Construction Contract To West Valley For Three Point Three, Three Million Seven-Hundred-Ninety-Nine-Thousand-Five-Dollars. Award The Professional Services Agreement For Construction Management To MHM. Award Professional Service Agreement For The Labor Compliance To Solis Group. And then authorize The Finance Director, Director To Make The Necessary Supplemental Appropriations Once The Funding Commitment Is Received And How We Establish The Project. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Moody. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any comments from the public?
I have a question for you. I saw that there were forecasting some housing district being built near your school or near this Berry School. Can something be tied into that, since they're going to be doing utility work and water mains for that new housing proposal? Can something be addressed with that?
You know, that's a great question, and, and one of the benefits of this project is that with, with this work, this fourteen-inch main on Railroad and then the twelve-inch on Stewart, that ties into the ultimate build-out of the Boge-Stewart Master Plan and, and the ultimate infrastructure for the city. So as the Boge-Stewart Master Plan develops, that's a direct savings for that infrastructure, and that also helps just with water quality issues where we have dead-in water mains that need to be flushed at these areas, that it ties in, helps circulate the system. So there's definitely a benefit with the city move forward with this, besides bringing quality water to the school.
Thank you. Thank you.
Me again. I was going to ask that question, but I, I didn't see that there was a real response. So the county, I saw in the county planning, planning commission, is considering or approved recently a development next to Berry Elementary. And I think that was the question that he was asking, not the Boge-Stewart Master Plan, which still, I haven't seen anything coming up on that one yet. The only thing that I've seen lately is that, that development down there. And I think that was what he was asking, is, is that going to get tied into this? Because originally, when they started this, I remember the plan, they had asked people on that line if they wanted to tie in, and they said no. So, but this is a new development, and if that's the case, the question is, is if we're going to let them tie in or not? And if they do, I'm, I'm all for it, because it just helps everybody else paying water rates.
So per LAFCO agreements, we're not allowed, the city's not allowed to serve water outside the sphere of influence. And so currently, the sphere of influence is that purple line on the map that runs along Stewart Road, and so anything south of Stewart Road would, unless it's health, typically a school or some sort of government body that, for health and safety reasons, would not qualify to be able to be served by the city.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for comments and/or action.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
This has been a longstanding project that I know several of us inherited, and while I'm happy to see it starting to move forward, I continue to want to emphasize, this needs to be absolutely revenue-neutral, if you will, or neutral cost to the city of Yuba City. So I appreciate the efforts to make sure that the state is paying its, its, this project forward and/or the school district, since we are serving outside of not only the sphere of influence, but the city limits as well.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain action on this item.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution which takes these following actions. Reject Newland Entities Incorporated Bid Is Non- Responsive. B, Award A Construction Contract To West Valley Construction In The Amount Of Three Million Seven Hundred Ninety-Nine Thousand And Five Dollars, Subject To State Approval Of An Amended Funding Agreement. Award A Professional Services Agreement For Construction Management And Inspection Services To MHM Incorporated In The Amount Of Two Hundred And Eleven Thousand Six Hundred And Twenty-Three Dollars And Sixty Cents, Subject To State Approval Of An Amended Funding Agreement. Award A Professional Service Agreement For Labor Compliance Services To The Solis Group In The Amount Of Eighteen Thousand Seven Hundred And Sixty Dollars, Again, Subject To The State Approval Of An Amended Funding Agreement. And Authorize The Finance Director To Make The Necessary Supplemental Appropriations.
Got a motion from Councilmember Boomgarden.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Shaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Number seventeen, Yuba City Lighting And Landscaping Maintenance Districts, numbers two, three, four, and five, Town Center and sixty-nine subdivisions throughout Yuba City, and Yuba City Lighting And Landscaping Maintenance Districts, number six, Commercial District Public Hearing Presented By Mr. Josh Wolf.
Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself.
Okay.
And we should have one more recusal on this item. If you recall, originally, we had three council members that have to recuse themselves, but then we flipped a coin to determine the one that could remain, so that we have a quorum.
Thank you, City Manager.
So the, the one that remains, the two that were, two recues were Harris and Pasquale, and Harris won the, the coin flip, so he should actually vote on this item.
So, City Clerk, just so that I'm clear, is the reason why he would be voting on this item because Council, Councilmember Shaw was absent at the time?
Correct. So the meeting that took place on June sixth.
Okay. So I guess my next question is, do any of the three council members that are currently sitting up here have a conflict? Do any of you live within these districts two, four, two, three, four, or five?
Councilmember Shaw does, and at the last meeting, if you recall, Councilmember Harris was absent, and so we had to do another coin toss between Councilmember Pasquale and Councilmember Shaw.
Ah, okay. So if I recall correctly, then, in which case, Councilmember Shaw would need to recuse himself, and then Councilmember Pasquale would need to come back in because he won or lost the twin cost, depending on how you look at it, to sit on the council. So, Councilmember Shaw, if you would recuse yourself, and if somebody grabbed Councilmember Pasquale, I think we can get through this item.
So we just, I vote once, he votes the other?
Yeah, because you were gone the one time, then he had to take in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. And then there was two.
So the, the city clerk administrators is, doesn't think that's correct, so we should go back and look at the minutes really quickly of the last meeting- So we should go back and look at the minutes really quickly of the last meeting because that would reflect who voted.
So the public will wait just a moment here. The reason why we do this is because there's ethics and conflicts laws that say that you can't vote on certain things that may directly affect you, and some of the council members live in this particular jurisdiction. So in this particular case, we have three council members that live in one of these districts. The problem is, is you need, that just leaves five council members, if three of them are conflicted out, you don't have a quorum. You need three in order to act. So there's a coin toss process. Challenge we had is due to state timing, we had to do two coin tosses. So the question is, is who's now sitting up here? Is it Councilmember Pasquale or Councilmember Shaw? And so we're backchecking the minutes to see who won the last coin toss, which I seem to recall was Councilmember Pasquale, but we're just making sure we can.
My notes indicate that we did a coin toss on June 6th for landscape maintenance districts two through six, and that we did a separate coin toss on the 18th for District One.
Ah, okay. So on June 6th, who won the coin toss?
On June 6th, Vice Mayor Harris won that coin toss, and so he would remain in the vote. So this vote for item 17 should be Boomgarden, Harris, and Kirchner.
Got it. Thank you. Councilmember Pasquale, would you mind grabbing Councilmember Harris? We just want to make sure. And part of the challenge is, is we have multiple districts with multiple conflicts, and so we need to make sure that they're wearing the right hats in the right time. We appreciate your patience.
All right. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about lighting and landscape district numbers two through six. As a background, city annually levies and collects special assessments to maintain and service landscaping and lighting improvements. Assessments were approved by the property owners at the time of the formation of said districts. Districts numbers two through six have provisions for cost of living adjustment, so they can be adjusted every year based on inflation. Every year from January to January, just for a little background, the cost of living adjustment from January of 2022 to 2023 was 6.4% increase. On June 6th of 2023, council entered or ordered the engineer to file a report for the districts. On June 20th of 2023, council adopted resolutions approving the engineers' reports and resolutions setting a public hearing for July of 2023, or, sorry, August of 2023. The engineers' reports are on file and in the city clerk's office. The reports describe each district, its improvements, the methods of assessment, and the proposed assessment for each parcel. This year, based on the budgets, we are seeing increases in levy in districts two, three, and four. District five, zones of benefit A, C, E, G, H, and L, and District six, zones of benefit A1 through A3, B4, B5, B8 through 13. Additionally, there are decreases in levy for districts number five, zones of benefit B, D, F, I, J, and K, and District six, zones of benefit B1 through B3, B6, B7, B14, B15, and C1. Here's fiscal impact, or the fiscal projection for the upcoming fiscal year. We are, for each of the zones of benefit, for District number two, we're expecting a revenue of about $86,200, expenditures of $35,770, with a projected reserve balance of $168,000 approximately. District number three, revenue of around $17,000, with expenditures around $17,000 near balance, with a projected reserve balance of $2,574. District number four, we're expecting revenues of $174,995, expenditures at $129,023, with a projected reserve of $197,186. District number five, revenue around $582,084, with expenditures of $514,423, with a projected reserve balance of $344,241. And then finally, District number six, with revenue of $38,371, expenditures at around $14,768, with a projected balance of $185,755. The alternatives for this item are to direct the modification of the assessment amounts, which will affect future revenue and expenditure for fiscal year 23, 24, or counsel the district and find alternative funding sources to maintain lighting and landscape district. We do not recommend that alternative. What we do recommend is conducting a public hearing and adopting a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 23, 24 for the Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance Districts numbers two, three, four, five, and six. And attached, we have some maps of all the districts throughout the city. There's quite a few. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. This public hearing for consideration of Yuba City Lighting and Landscaping Maintenance Districts numbers two, three, four, and five, Town Center and 69 subdivisions throughout Yuba City and Yuba City Lighting and Maintenance Landscape Maintenance District number six, Commercial District is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none? I'm closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to council.
Through the mayor.
Sure.
I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 2023 through 2024 for the Yuba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance Districts numbers two, three, four, five, and six, Town Center, 69 subdivisions throughout Yuba City, including the Palisades Subdivisions and Buick Vista Neighborhood and Commercial District.
Got a motion from Councilmember Boomgarden? And a second from Vice Mayor Harris? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Number 18, Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District number one, Stabler Lane, Garden Highway, public hearing, once again, presented by Mr. Josh Wolf.
So before we proceed on this item, we should have Pasquale, Shaw, and Kirchner.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I own property within this area, so I'll be recusing myself.
Okay.
It turns out because Councilmember Shaw is here and Councilmember Pasquale stepped in last time on the coin toss, we now have three people that don't have a conflict, and we can still get a quorum. So Councilmember Pasquale, sorry about the rotating chairs, but if you could step up for this item as well.
Oh, man, poor guy.
And as you can tell by the number of jurisdictions and the number of properties that are out there, this can be rather complicated, so we appreciate everybody's flexibility on this.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for that. Mr. Wolf, here we go again.
Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. This item is for Landscape Maintenance District number one. Landscape Maintenance District number one primarily covers two area, one part being district's zone of benefit 1A, which is the northern part of Yuba City, just south of the Regency area, kind of on the east side of Stabler Lane, between Stabler Lane and Highway 99. The other larger part of the zone of benefit is 1B, which encapsulates most of the Shanghai Bend area, Garden Highway area, and parts of Railroad Avenue along the southern part of town. So as a background, city annually levies and collects special assessments to maintain the landscaping improvements throughout this district. The assessments were approved by the property owners of record during the time of the assessment, or the time of creation of the district. District number one, zones of benefit A and B do not have provisions for cost of living adjustment. Zones have historically been charged with a maximum levy amounts to cover maintenance expenses due to the original levies being based on $1990. Zones of benefit B1 and B2 were created recently and have COLA provisions included. In previous years, expenditures have exceeded revenues in zones of benefit A and B due to lack of COLA provisions. The city has reduced professional services, water, and administration expenses, allowing revenue to exceed expenditures in those districts, or in those zones of benefit. The city has previously attempted to modify District number one to include COLA provisions, but residents oppose the modification in the past. In order to restore previous levels of maintenance in those areas and achieve additional funding, a new Proposition 218 process will need to be approved. On June 6th, the council ordered the engineer to file a report for the district, and then on October, or October, August 15th, council, on June 6th, council ordered an engineer to file a report for the district. On June 20th, council adopted resolutions approving reports and setting a public hearing for August 15th, 2023. Engineer's report has been prepared and is on file in the city clerk's office. The report describes the district, improvements therein, method of assessment, and proposed assessments for each parcel. In District 1A, we're anticipating a revenue of approximately $22,007, expenditures of about $18,609, with a projected balance of $79. District 1B, which includes the new districts B1 and B2, we're anticipating a revenue of $66,315, expenditures of about $65,186, and a projected reserve balance of $13,952. The reserve balance in zone of benefit B does consist of general fund transfers from previous years. Staff recommends maintaining this reserve balance to cover unforeseen expenses. And moving forward, the city may be required to further reduce maintenance levels in District number one, or utilize other funds to maintain the previous levels of maintenance for the zones. Alternatives, council may reduce assessment amounts, which will affect the future revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year, or cancel the district and find alternative funding sources to maintain the landscaping. Council may direct the staff to follow legal procedures in order to modify District number one to include an adjustment to match current expenditures with COLA provisions to avoid future shortfalls. Or the council may direct other fund sources to supplement the district revenues based on previous fiscal year expenditures. In previous years, the fiscal, or in previous years, the average expenditure dollar amount in Zone B was approximately $100,000, with revenues being about $65,000. So what we do recommend is that council hold a public hearing in that we adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 23, 24 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Wolf. Public hearing for consideration of Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District one, Stabler Lane, Garden Highway area, public hearing is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to council.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I move to adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 2023, 24 pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Shaw and a second from Vice Mayor Harris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Everybody comfortable? I'm not in a big hurry to go out there in that heat. Just saying. Okay, we got the band all back together. Future agenda items, future agenda items, this is an opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening you would like to have brought back to the council at a later date. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none. Reports of communication, the following reports and communication items are provided for the council's information. No action will be taken on items under this section unless the council agrees to it on a subsequent agenda. Twenty, city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor. On this Thursday, we have a shop talk at Sopa Thai at 12:00 PM. It'll be, Ashley will be doing a demo of the Yuba City Permit Planner for the commercial portal, so we recommend that people participate. August 23rd, we have a planning commission meeting where the planning commission will be considering the Merment Village Apartments Development Plan, and then also the Hinson Farms Apartments Development Plan and General Plan Amendment. On August 23rd at 3:30 PM, we have a PD swearing in for promoted sergeants and lieutenants. And then on Saturday, August 26th, we have the ribbon cutting for DRS Baines Park at 8:00 AM on Harder Parkway. And I would just like to note, so Ms. Essaman is no longer here, but under the Harder State's South subdivision agreement, she inquired about the bike path on Jefferson. We actually have a separate project and grant to extend the bike path from its current terminus at Hooper all the way to DRS Baines Park. And there is a civic area that has shade, it has a self-bike repair station, and that's really the staging area for bicyclists if they want to stage there to go out to Sutter. And so it was considered as part of the project, but we have existing grants and plans in place to address the bikes. So thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Number 21, city council reports will begin this evening with Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The things that I attended over the last few weeks, and we haven't, seems like we haven't been in here for a bit, but National Night Out, I had the opportunity to ride along with Chief Baker. We visited, as many of you did, various spots throughout the city, and it was a great job. And thanks to the police and fire and city staff that helped with that. I did, was finally able to get to a Waffle Wednesday. Thank you, guys. Awesome, well-attended as well. I had the opportunity to attend Happy Vikings ribbon cutting as part of a presentation from the city to welcome their expansion, really nice expansion. I attended the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, and I'll leave, pass that to the mayor for his comments. The next item for me is an important one, and it's exciting to be able to start to report out on the Revenue Ad hoc Committee. As you know, the city has been in sort of a multi, I'm going to say multi-year effort to try to really dig into our finances and to take a good deep dive into those and make sure that the budget accurately reflected the services that we were providing, but also began to the process, or continued the process of looking forward. Vice Mayor Harris and I are serving currently at the mayor's request and the council's approval on this ad hoc committee. And last week, we had a meeting that basically was our opportunity to begin the process of engaging the public in the work that city staff and city council has been doing for these many years, but also specifically over the last five to six months as it relates to projecting for the future. As you know, one of our main goals is to be more proactive than reactive. And in that spirit, we have done the work, I should say we, staff has done the work to project their actual costs for the foreseeable future, three to five years. And what we wanted to do is begin the process of sharing that with certain citizen groups. So we had our initial, our initial meeting, included the city manager, police chief, or homeless liaison officer, fire chief, public works director, and we took the extra effort to invite our county sheriff, Brandon Barnes, and our county deputy, or not deputy, our county district attorney, Jen Dupree, because we wanted them to not only see what was going on, but we also offered them the opportunity to share their thoughts about the future and some of the needs their department and ours, because as you well know, the city and the county do overlap services. We are beginning to receive the feedback from that initial meeting. We still have in front of us reporting We still have in front of us a reporting back out to you as a council, and, you know, we'll be scheduling that here in the not-too-distant future. But, and we also have the opportunity to begin the process of potentially meeting with our colleagues at Sutter County, the supervisors for their ad hoc committee as well, as it appears based upon action at that county's meeting, County Board of Supes meeting, that they are, again, looking at a, putting together something for their revenue as well. So, anyway, things are moving along, stand by. I think we're going to be able to present to you here in the not-too-distant future for a lot of discussion and, you know, potentially a decision on what if and when we do something to address some issues that we're all familiar with in regards to ongoing financial needs.
And with that, Mr. Mayor.
I do have one other thing. In light of what happened in Maui, I think that, you know, emergency preparedness is something that sometimes doesn't get a lot of discussion. And if you look back a few years back, the community of Santa Rosa, flat, not too untypical of Yuba City, experienced significant residential structure loss because of some winds. We look at Maui, I don't think anybody ever really predicted that what happened to Lahaina and the surrounding areas, and again, that was wind. That, you know, I'm not an alarmist, but I do have a fair amount of experience with fire, and I'm telling you, that potential could, you know, it exists here. So, if people, I'm encouraging people to really take, you know, a hard look at their own emergency preparedness for those types of things that might happen. Doesn't have to be a fire, it could be, could be a chemical emergency, it could be something, it could be 100 different things. But if you have to leave your home in a moment's notice, please have a plan. Please have a plan. And if you need help with that, I know our police and fire departments would be more than willing to chat with you about that. I know there's some city, city efforts and some city and county websites as well. With that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, Mayor. Attended the ribbon cutting for, or I guess it was the chamber ribbon cutting for the Holiday Inn Express and Dunked the Mayor. Gave my shots and didn't quite make getting dunked, but I was interested, how much money did you raise, Mayor?
So, there were, so, for those who weren't aware, there was a grand opening for the Holiday Inn Express over at Shasta Avenue a few weeks ago. And the donations for the Dunk the Mayor went to Back the Badge, Yuba Sutter, and to the ALS Association. It was my understanding that there were some private donations that were made directly towards Back the Badge, so I wasn't really privy to those amounts. The amount of cash that was raised that day was about $250, where I had a discussion with the owners of the property, which are amazing people, and they were going to make forthcoming donations as well.
Terrific. Okay, so anyway, I didn't get him dunked. I gave it my best shot. Went to, I'm part of the Gilheiser Drainage District Board, and we adopted our budget. Also attended National Night Out, which was a great time, the people were just great, just out and about, and it was a whole array of different lavish stuff, all the way down to people putting barbecues out on the street and having their kids ride their bicycles around, which was really fun. Looking forward to the grand jury's report coming out. I think it's going to lighten up a lot of our community, enlighten them of what is actually needed. And also, I was on, I'm on the air quality, air quality board as well, and we did some financial adoptions and such, and changing bank accounts and such, but we are breathing better because of them. And I always like the fact that we always categorize everything as not a want but a need in this community, and we've got that focus. And I mean, it's said time and time again, and I'm all about the needs and not the wants, because everybody's, we've got unlimited wants. And my last thing is, is I want to see the high school kids that are riding their bikes to school, because I live next door to Yuba City High School, and I've never seen one in the last 30 years. So, it's interesting. Everybody's mass transit, I don't walk to school, I get picked up from school, and it just, it actually irritates me, because I was a kid that used to ride my bike to high school and get laughed at, but oh, well, I didn't have the gas money to drive my truck. So, anyway, with that, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How do you follow that? I don't have a bike. First of all, where I went last time, I want to thank my colleagues for picking up slack for me. We're in a season still in our family lives that this is going to go on for a little bit more, so I just want to extend my thank you, you guys have been helping me out. Did make several, actually several of the ribbon cuttings, you guys have covered a lot of those. Made National Night Out, thank you to PD, had a great time. You know, you guys, you guys always do it up. So, thank you for letting us hang out and go along with you guys, and it was a great time as always. We had a transit meeting, you met our new director tonight, so I'll let the mayor follow up on that. The, we had the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation, we met, we meet quarterly. The big thing that's on the agenda right now is we're actually, for the first time in several years, we're going through a review and goal-setting with the executive director. It's a positive thing, it's not a negative thing. That's probably the big takeaway right now from EDC is really looking forward and helping her plan and that. DBA went to their meeting for the, at the beginning of August. The same stuff that they have about there, first of all, thank you from the DBA to the council for choosing the one that said downtown on the water tower. They're looking forward to that. Everything's always still about cleanup down there, as we're still dealing with the transits and everything there. But need to put this date on your calendar, which is October 19th. That will be the trick-or-treat for downtown for the DBA. I made a personal request on behalf of the council that they actually closed part of Pluma Street for the trick-or-treaters, because it's much safer, and reiterated the fact that I stood between a car and a child last year, and I'll do it again, but we really just don't need to get somebody hurt. So, hopefully that'll be forthcoming. Want to put another date out there, another project that I've been partnering with several of the Christian churches in the area. October 7th of this year, Yuba Sutter Church Impact, which is just the name they came under, which is several of the churches are going to be doing some volunteer projects. That is all getting queued up, and would love to see you guys out there that morning, just pitching in. I'll send you guys more information to that if you guys would like to be a part of that. And then, last but not least, a big shout-out to our fire department. Former chief down there, you know, you see most people on their worst days, and since our last meeting, I've actually seen fire on two bad days. And I just want to say that the guys were stellar. We had a medical emergency at our office, they responded, and it was exactly what we went through in Fire Ops. It was to the letter, and they were rock stars. And then, you never want to get the phone call from your wife that she walks in the house and smells gas. So, they were, you know, I was a point of excitement, they all, they all rolled up, not what you're thinking, brother, I knew where you were at. They came in, cleared our house, because we had a natural gas leak that was going on, and they took care of us just like they would any other citizens. So, just want to extend a thank you, because both of those happened within like three days of each other. So, it was a bad weekend. So, but that, I will be at everything that I can in the weeks ahead, and just again, appreciate everything you guys are doing for me.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Harris.
Yeah, July and August, I typically not in town very often, however, I did, as Councilmember Boomgard mentioned, make the revenue measure, the Citizens Group, which was, I think, very helpful to explain the status we're in, and then also get some input from some key citizen members. And so, we're looking forward to further discussions with them and also working with the county on that issue. And then we have SICOG, SICOG meeting this month, they're, the executive director decided to rotate locations of meetings, and this month, which is the day after tomorrow, we're having the SICOG meeting in Marysville. And we're also going to kind of go outside the box a little bit, and we're doing it at 8:30 in the morning, we're meeting at the brick, and we're going to do a walking tour of historic Marysville. So, those folks on that board who we all vote for, you know, where we send millions of dollars throughout this region, they're all going to be in our backyard, learning about our community, not just Marysville, but the whole Yuba Sutter area. So, it's going to be exciting for that, we'll do a walking tour, and then we're going to have the board meeting itself. I think it's Health and Human Services down there off of Lynnhurst is where we're going to be having that. So, we will be looking forward to participating in that. Other than that, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's my turn. It's been a busy month. I'll begin with, which you probably saw recently on Mosquito, they had their first West Nile human case in Yuba County, and so that's got everyone's attention on Mosquito. Transit, as was mentioned before, we had the new director here with a presentation. Attended the ribbon cutting at Dylan's Pizza at the end of Pluma Street, exciting new owners there. Also ribbon cutting with Sahoda Bracket and Associates. Also another ribbon cutting with Flash Services, love going to ribbon cuttings because it beats the alternative. National Night Out was really well-attended, I appreciate PD for allowing me the opportunity to tag along. I always enjoy spending time out with our law enforcement folks when given the opportunity. The YSCC Government Affairs Committee was hosted this past month by James Gallagher, Simpleman Gallagher, and something that I brought up, and hopefully I'm going to get an answer to soon, is Silver Dollar Fairgrounds in Butte County was awarded a $30 million grant through the state, and it has to do with emergency, being able to respond to incidents like the Butte Fire, excuse me, the Camp Fire. But it wasn't just the Silver Dollar Fairground, there was a list of fairgrounds throughout the state of California that received quite a bit of money, and I was kind of upset that our fairgrounds wasn't on the list. First of all, we happen to share our fairgrounds with a neighboring county. In addition to that, we were impacted by the Camp Fire, and so I'm hoping to get an answer from his chief of staff on whether or not we're even, we would qualify for funding, or maybe the next round of this, if that would be possible, because I'm sure our fairgrounds could use that, the money. The funding. Attended another ribbon cutting, Happy Viking, they are really taking their business to the next level. Another ribbon cutting at Renew Holiday Inn Express, that place is open, and they're doing a great business, which is exciting to see. Really, really loving family from the Bay Area, got a chance to sit down and actually, and talk with them and eat with them, so that was exciting to see. Subufka, I actually have some literature up here for folks to look at if they're interested. A lot of stuff going on with Subufka right now, as you probably heard me talk about before, a few years before I was on Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, there was a $5 million grant that was awarded to the area to remove silt deposit at the mouth of the, at the confluence of the Yuba and the Feather. Five, excuse me, half of that, $2.5 million went towards just the permits. Those permits are valid until 2026. Last year, we tried to apply for another $10 million, and we didn't get it. But in the meantime, if you see the aerial version, this island is out right in the middle of Feather River, and it just gets bigger and bigger and bigger, which is a bad thing, because you want less, excuse me, you want more river space than less. And so, it might be a little bit too early to talk about this, but something that we brought up is if this thing continues to grow at this pace, I think it's going to inch up, inch up the Yuba River, which is a bad thing, obviously, because you want water to come down. And once that happens, I'm hoping somebody will approach the water agency to see if they could participate in some of the funding, since the permits have already been paid, to, I don't want to say dredge, that's a bad word, but to remove some of that sediment from the river. The other thing that we're in the early stages of looking at with Subufka is a potential levy assessment for the area. Other areas around us have already voted on it, so that's to be continued for next time. Mentioned Gilheiser, I think we broke a record this time with a four-minute meeting, we passed the, we passed the budget. I mentioned the mosquito, okay, and I would like to give a shout-out to our Revenue Ad Hoc Committee for the time that you gentlemen have put into that, and just the meticulous nature that the city, and the level of seriousness that the city, potential revenue measure, that the city is putting towards us. So, thank you, city manager and gentlemen. And lastly, today was a really, it was a neat day to be mayor today. I was honored by having a tour next door at the brand-new Feather River Temple of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. And I urge the community, if you have the opportunity, it's open to the public from August 19th through September 9th, no appointment necessary, you can just show up, I believe that's excluding Sundays. But what was really impactful to me was, obviously, there's a lot of folks there that don't live here, and some of these folks are from areas like Utah or even Southern California. And what I was constantly told was how open and accommodating and accepting this community is, because a lot of these folks open, they go to other communities, and I don't, from what I gather, they don't get the kind of welcoming that they did, they have in Yuba City, and so that was, that was very special for me. And they are very aware that they're right next door to City Hall, and it's really impactful to those folks. So, I urge the community to take advantage of that. And with that, I believe we adjourned.